Morning, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our national anthem. Before we get started, I just wanted to share something with -- councillor Bossard is not here this morning. She wishes to advise that at 5:49 a.m. this morning, her very first grandchild, Xavier Keith Strickland, was born. Mum, Dad, and Grandma, and baby are doing fine. I think Grandma's over the moon. Very well, we'll carry on. Any additions to the agenda? No? Seeing none, could I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Wheeler, all in favor? I just carried corrections or amendments to the August 24, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes. Any corrections or amendments? All right. Could I get a motion to adopt the August 24, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes? Councillor Schuler, all in favor? That's carried. Proclamations. We have two this morning. It's my pleasure to proclaim Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month for September. Muscular dystrophy is a group of neuromuscular disorders that have no known cure. In almost all cases, there are few treatments and no way to stop the disorder's progression. Muscular dystrophy Canada is a national nonprofit organization committed to funding research into the causes, treatments, and eventual cure of neuromuscular disorders, as well as providing services to people with neuromuscular disorders and public education. Whereas people today have the opportunity to live longer lives because of breakthroughs in medical research, and whereas muscular dystrophy is a neuromuscular disorder that affects many and has no known cure, and whereas only through the support of the community may a cure be found. Now, therefore, I, Glen McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim September 2016 as Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month in the Town of Drayton Valley. Following that, we have a proclamation in respect of Alberta Culture Days. Whereas culture arises and flourishes first locally, and whereas the Town of Drayton Valley has already shown its intention to implement projects that affirm both its cultural identity and the active participation of its citizens to the cultural life of the municipality, and whereas the cultural community has set up an annual national event, Culture Days, that would consolidate a number of cultural events under a common theme across Canada by promoting the widest possible access to the arts, heritage, and culture. Now, therefore, I, Glen McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim October 1st and 2nd, 2016 as Culture Days in the Town of Drayton Valley. Sorry. Councillor Nettle?
Teresa couldn't be present today with the opening of the pickleball courts, so they asked me to speak to Alberta Culture Days, if that's okay.
It'd be a good time to do it.
Okay. That's what I figured. So during that weekend, Drayton Valley, the Committee for Alberta Culture Days has several events going on that weekend, but namely, we have Tommy Banks, Senator -- former Senator Tommy Banks, having a concert on October 1st. I had the pleasure of emceeing that evening, and the EPAC group, as well as the organizing committee, has graciously donated free tickets, because there it's all free that weekend, but you'll still need a ticket to get in to all the councillors, and CAO, and partners. So please come out and enjoy that evening. There are several things going on that day, all celebrating arts and culture in our community, as well as heritage. The events, I believe, will be online, and Tyler can probably speak to that a little bit more on our Facebook page. Great. So we just wanted to thank you for the town's support in celebrating arts and culture, and even more so with later in the agenda with our Reckon Culture Plan. So it's a good day for culture.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, I don't think the FCSS delegation is here. I don't see them. They've lost a lot of weight, if they have. So we have the RCMP August report from Staff Sergeant Calhoun. Welcome.
Good morning. Please make sure if the mic is on. If not, push a button while it looks like it's on, so we're good. So just a few things before I begin. First thing was, is for the tour of Alberta that happened, I just wanted to let you guys know that we received some very, very positive reviews from the -- our RCMP side that was doing the leading of the race into town. Said they're very pleased with how the roads have been cleared. Kudos to the volunteers that came out, and just all in all, it was a -- they said it was second to none for how we did, and that, you know, very close to the same thing they had in Red Deer, which was excellent. So just to kind of give you guys that heads up on that. Moving on now to our municipal detachment stats. Excuse me, I have to clear my throat here. So we'll go into our yearly comparisons from 2012 to 2016. As you can see, some of the major things that come up have to deal with our assaults. Certainly, there's a downward trend, significant decrease from 2015 or '76 down to '54 this year, which is good to see, but again, I think it also has to do with the lack of people within the town, the ghost population, the type of thing which is impacting that number. So I'll move more into the actual August stats when I get in more to it, but it seems to be a downward trend on a lot of different things, whether it's criminal harassment, the person's crime in particular. Unfortunately for this year, we're up on our sex assaults. And again, with uttering threats, we're up a couple of calls as well. Where we do see the significant increases with our break-in and our theft of motor vehicle and theft under stats, and I'll address some of that as well here coming up as well, but we are seeing an increase across the board for those as well. Moving to our summary, our stats summary. For impaired operation this month, this past month, in August, we nabbed six impaired drivers. So that's pretty good to get those guys off the road that way. We had 33 tickets in town this month in October that were written by the detachment members, as well as for our patrol logs, we had 58. And 24-hour suspensions, we only had one, but that's because, again, we're charging the other six that we caught as well. So that's some good stuff that way. Coming to our monthly stats, last year we were at 11 for this time, or this month for assaults. This time we're at seven. Of those actual files, two after investigation were changed to unfounded because there wasn't enough evidence in order to proceed towards that. For the five that were remaining, one was a family violence file that went to charge. Three files where the complainant declined to pursue charges. Normally, in cases where it's family violence, we approach ahead, even against wishes, just because, again, we want to make sure that these people are placed on conditions. In this case, it was a consensual fight of some sort, or something like that, where one person decided they didn't want to proceed. So there's three files of that. There's one that's still under investigation, and there were six unfounded occurrences this past month. Moving on to our uttering threats, there's three files. One went to charge, basically an uttering death threat towards a family member. One was where the complainant did not wish to continue, and one was changed to unfounded, another family dispute, but it wasn't chargeable. It didn't meet the criteria for that. When we move on to our break and enter, we had five instances in August of those. Two of them were residences, and two of them were sheds where tools were taken. There was also, and there, with regards to the shed break-ins themselves, there was described as a silver Nissan Titan that was involved in these thefts. So again, we're looking for anything that can help us on that as well. Moving to theft of vehicle, we had two files in August, which is a significant decrease. I'll approach that here in a moment, but we still have an outstanding black Chevy Silverado. The license plate BTM3356 is still listed as missing, and there is a Toyota minivan which is recovered. Due to our general investigation section and some of the investigative techniques that they have deployed, we were able to successfully nab a couple of our, what we would classify as high target value people, which is why I believe we've seen such a significant decrease in the number of thefts this past month. Those people are Logan Bruner, 29 years old, of Drayton Valley, and Joey Gally, 29 years old, of Evansburg. And they're facing several charges and are before the courts right now. So again, that's a very successful operation. We've been using for quite a bit now, and we finally were able to get some success on it. So moving to our theft under stats, we had 26 this past month. Those came from things like, there's three that were cleared, other which means one person left without paying at a restaurant and that was sorted out. One took some tools, but they gave them back, and another was found to be a civil issue that no charges were able to be dealt with. We did have 10 unsolved thefts. They range from warehouses being entered and items taken. In this case, we had, well, actually, there's more than 10 of the unsolved, but 10 incidents of unlocked vehicles where there's tablets taken, backpacks stolen, registration insurance taken, and change was usually the big target as well. So just encourage the public to make sure their vehicles are locked before they go in for the night. There was two gas and dashes this past month. One theft of liquor from a liquor store, stolen bike. Sad situation where a couple of hitchhikers, when they got out of the car, the vehicle took off with their belongings. A wallet was stolen from a backpack in a change room. There's one interesting one of a license plate that was stolen and used. You know, the way that the person found out is because they got a photorator ticket. So that came through that way. There's also one instance of a theft of groceries and theft of money from a bank account as well. The theft of groceries, we didn't have a suspect. We came after the fact, and they didn't know who it was. But just to follow up from last council, I did provide the food bank number to all the members, so now in cases where we're still going to be charging, but we'll also provide that as well for them, to give them some assistance that way. We had 13 occurrences of mischief this past month. Now mischief can cover a wide range of things, from damaging a property to the obstruction or prevention of use of enjoyment of the property. Some of the stuff I can't make up, but we had one where a subject defecated on a floor of a residence they're at. You know, there's a couple of subjects on a rooftop of buildings that's horsing around. Another incident of that as well, subject checking doors, but there's no entry gained. Subject that was drinking in a business causing issues, car window that was smashed. Again, two subjects that were smoking marijuana on a roof. A broken window at a business, and again, some people acting strange in front of a business, a couple of calls of drug activity behind businesses, and another one where an unwanted male at a residence. So again, they are commonplace mischief things that we go to, and kind of a lot of nuisance calls, but sometimes the damage happens, and we find out after the fact and go from there. Some good things to report on our false alarms. We, last year, we had 41. This month, we had 22. So it's a significant decrease from what we were seeing before. As well, the last thing I can tell you about is in the last page, this is the one where, again, the scoring stats show some issues that are highlighted. We are aware of the residential break-ins. As you can see, normally, it's a case that not so much of people actually breaking a lock to get in, it's usually unlocked doors, people going in, that type of thing. So it's unfortunately a day and age where we do need to secure residences and secure vehicles and all those things, just because, again, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. There was one there that said, "An issue for a break into cottage or seasonal residence." When I looked into that, that scoring has since been changed to the proper scoring. So that was why that came up, because there's been zeros across the board before that, and we had one, so that's why it came up, because the average was changed. And the last one, speeding violations for the year. We're at 88 versus last year, where we were at eight. Again, that's just a completion of scoring, so we are being a lot more tight on that. So again, that's why it shows it as an issue, because it's way above what the average has traditionally been, but it's because we're increasing our enforcement action within the town as well. So with that, I'm open for any questions, if anyone has anything.
Thank you very much, Staff Sergeant, and thanks again for providing the number and the recommendation to your members to direct people to the food bank when appropriate. Any questions, concerns from council? No?
Just as an aside too, I'm going to be starting regular meetings with the CAO as well, usually on a monthly basis, just to enhance the communication with the town in general. So I'm looking forward to that, and we'll move forward from there, but I think councillor Frederickson had something as well.
Yeah. Oh, you have a question? Yeah, thank you for that, and councillor Frederickson.
Staff Sergeant, you talked about tour of Alberta. The RCMP were also involved with the DV100. How did that run this year from your perspective?
As far as I know, I haven't gotten a report back on that yet from the people that are involved. There's a number of people that were assigned to block the first entranceway, and I haven't heard anything negative, so that's always a thumbs up. So I'm going on the fact that everything went smoothly, but again, those members were assigned to make sure that everyone was able to go through safely before continuing on.
Great. And thanks again for your involvement of your members in both of those events.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, we have from FCSS, Emily Hippen and Angela Pertula. Did I say that right? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. So I am here, I am the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Coordinator, and I'm here to talk about an event which your mayor is taking part in, Chilling Out in DV, which is a homeless-for-a-night challenge. We're putting on this event to raise awareness and funds for our Community Assistance Fund, which supports all our programs aimed at poverty and homelessness reduction in Drayton Valley. The basic premise of the idea is that people register, collect funds, and then spend the night out under the stars. It's taking place just outside of Rotary House, near the skate park on the lawns there. We've got activities planned. We're screening a documentary called Through My Eyes, which is about youth homelessness, and it was actually created by homeless youth in Edmonton, so it's local, and it's relevant, and it's new. So until they make a documentary on homelessness in rural Alberta, we can't get much more relevant to our situation. We'll be doing activities that pertain to homelessness. We have special guests, five of them, Constable Peter Ulinowski, Kim DeMarie from the Community Outreach School, who's the VP there, two lovely ladies from the TD Bank, Doris and Carissa, and Mayor Glen McLean have all put in a little extra effort and decided that their comfort for the night will be based on their fundraising ability, so hopefully.
In fairness, I didn't actually decide that.
Well, it was tacit by signing up, but unfortunately, we have a bit of a conundrum. We've decided to change the format a little bit from the original, which was that we would spend the entire night out under the stars, and it included a $20 registration fee. We have, I don't want to say we don't have interest, because we do have a lot of interest. We have more than enough volunteers, which is fabulous. That's not usually a bad thing. However, we have gotten very few registered participants, so what we're doing is we're waiving the registration fee, we're waiving the mandatory fundraising, and just hosting it from 7:00 p.m. to midnight, and just saying kind of a donate what you can. Hopefully, this way, we can still raise some awareness, raise a little bit of money, and have some fun, and then build the event up over the years. I don't know if we'll ever get as big as the Fight the Night in Edmonton that the Youth Empowerment Services puts on, but hopefully, one year, we won't need to have this event at all. So do you have any questions about Chilling Out in DV?
I think, just before I go to councillor Frederickson, I think it's a great initiative to bring some focus on the problem of homelessness in Drayton Valley. You know it exists, we know it exists. It is not widely known in the community, or widely appreciated, the depth of the problem.
Yeah.
So this helps bring some attention to it.
Yeah, this is, we didn't want to get too focused on the fundraising aspect. We wanted to make sure that this was an awareness campaign as well, and particularly aimed at youth, because this is supposed to be a fun event, and we actually have a few families who did register.
Does that mean I qualify as youth?
Sure.
Let's just cut it off there.
We'll put you in the youth category for the mission competition.
Everybody can go home now. Thanks. Councillor Frederickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have sat at other committees where, and like Mr. Mayor had said, in terms that the problem that we have here, whether it's wide known or whether people want to accept it's wide known or not, or that it exists, I'm wondering, I know when the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction first started, there was a report that was done, or a study that was done. Do we have any facts or stats on the homelessness situation in Drayton Valley?
In terms of, like, specific numbers and measurement, as there are, you know, X number of homeless people in Drayton Valley, the nature of rural homelessness is that it's very hidden, so we can't very well go out and count, because we've got so few people in such a large space, it's very hard to actually quantify. All we can say is that we do know this is an issue. One statistic I can give you is that we provided 61 nights of shelter between October and May this last year for 16 different individuals, and we know that that's not the entire homeless population, and that's just the absolutely homeless, the completely unsheltered homeless. This is not taking into account the people who are couch surfing, the people who are living in unstable conditions, conditions they can't afford, or conditions that are unhealthy, because the housing is not up to par. So it's very hard to quantify. Actually, just after we came out with our study, a province-wide environmental scan was done, and again, basically, one of the things they came up with was it's incredibly hard to measure, and even in cities, when you hear things like homeless counts or stuff like that, all that they're looking at is the absolutely homeless, and in those circumstances, they're easier to count because there's places for them to congregate, and people know where they'll be, whereas here, you can be chasing ghosts, basically, out and about. And another thing is that you might not recognize them as homeless out on the street. I've had people come into my office who I know for a fact are homeless because they've been asking me to help with shelter, and you'll see them walk down the street with a backpack and a gap hoodie and jeans. You would have no clue that that night, they would be without shelter. And one other thing I would like to say, just getting back to the event, is that we know that it is impossible for us to truly simulate a homeless experience, but we feel that even just for a night, we can still build empathy and awareness in our population.
Councillor Frederickson.
Donations from the event would go towards?
They go into our Community Assistance Fund, and then we actually have an information sheet up on our Facebook page, and is available to anyone about our programs. Mainly, it supports the Community MAP program, which is run by volunteers, but still requires things like cleaning supplies and blankets and food when we can't get it from the food bank. It supports our Rental Assistance Program, which is a program where we help get people into housing, or keep them in housing, so long as they're able to maintain that on their own, because we don't want to put people in a situation where they're going to be back on the street within a month. And then just the other, the program supports some services that we run, and also towards our longer-term goal of developing a community hostel that will serve as everything from emergency shelter to transitional housing.
Anything further?
All right. Thank you, and I'll hand it over to Angela.
Thanks very much.
Good morning. I'm just here to give you an update on the home support program. Since we started at the end of May, we have now tripled in our numbers. All of our projected measurements have been, we've actually seen them happen, the isolation, the referrals from other companies, us being able to notice a need in our community for different things. We're getting more of an influx of seniors into the office for a variety of different helps. We're seeming to notice a theme of the unknown, of different circumstances and stuff, and what to do about it, whether it be with technology, or just unknown what their next steps are. We feel that it's a really awesome program, and it's definitely going the way that we wanted it to be.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Councillor Frederickson, you can always count on at least one.
When you say numbers have tripled, do you have kind of a base idea of what those numbers would be?
Sure. When we first started up, we had on our list four people that had signed up for it, so when we began, we had those four people. Through word of mouth, through media, we've even gone into the churches, different organizations like the 55+ Club, Tomahawk. We now have 12 that are actively using the program. Two are in the county, the rest are here in town.
True. Keep going.
Also, I'm wondering, since you guys are able to see seniors either in their homes in a, in an environment that perhaps other people wouldn't be able to see unless you're family members, in the event that, say, you come across any sort of, say, I don't know, illness, or situations where, say, the senior's health is at risk, or anything along those lines, do you guys have any tools at your dispense that you're able to, you know, report, or, yeah, like, I don't even want to say report, but even refer them to, or anything along those lines?
As part of our handbook, our employees are requested that they would take training to recognize different signs of abuse, neglect, things like that. If a worker sees something, she comes back to the office, discusses it with me, and depending on the action that needs to be taken, it's either I will deal with it, if it's a referral of some kind, like home care or things like that. If it goes beyond that, then I refer it to Lola. Lola will take it to the next step. If the RCMP have to get involved, we'll call the RCMP.
All right. Very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. All right. We are on to decision items. 7.1, as mentioned earlier, councillor Bossard is not able to be with us today, so I asked councillor Schuler to speak to this item.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thanks very much.
Good morning. I'm just here to give you an update on the Home Support Program. Since we started at the end of May, we have now tripled in our numbers. All of our projected measurements have been, we've actually seen them happen, the isolation, the referrals from other companies, us being able to notice a need in our community for different things. We're getting more of an influx of seniors into the office for a variety of different helps. We're seeming to notice a theme of the unknown, of different circumstances and stuff, and what to do about it, whether it be with technology, or just unknown what their next steps are. We feel that it's a really awesome program, and it's definitely going the way that we wanted it to be.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Counsel Fredrickson, you can always count on at least one.
When you say numbers have tripled, do you have kind of a base idea of what those numbers would be?
Sure. When we first started up, we had on our list four people that had signed up for it. So when we began, we had those four people. Through word of mouth, through media, we've even gone into the churches, different organizations like the 55+ Club, Tomahawk. We now have 12 that are actively using the program, two are in the county, the rest are here in town.
True. Keep going.
Also, I'm wondering, since you guys are able to see seniors either in their homes in a, in an environment that perhaps other people wouldn't be able to see unless your family members, in the event that, say, you come across any sort of, say, I don't know, illness, or situations where, say, the senior's health is at risk, or anything along those lines, do you guys have any tools at your dispense that you're able to, you know, report, or, yeah, like, I don't even want to say report, but even refer them to, or anything along those lines?
As part of our handbook, our employees are requested that they would take training to recognize different signs of abuse, neglect, things like that. If a worker sees something, she comes back to the office, discusses it with me, and depending on the action that needs to be taken, it's either I will deal with it, if it's a referral of some kind, like home care or things like that. If it goes beyond that, then I refer it to Lola. Lola will take it to the next step. If the RCMP have to get involved, we'll call the RCMP.
All right. Very good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. All right. We are on to decision items. 7.1, as mentioned earlier, Counsel Bossard is not able to be with us today, so I asked Counsel Schuler to speak to this item.
Thank you, Your Worship. In reviewing outstanding tax accounts for mobile homes within the town, administration made telephone contact with the individual under whose name the utility account is registered, in an attempt to obtain contact information for the registered owner of the mobile home. It was discovered by administration, as a result of that conversation with the utility account holder, that the individual was also the registered owner of the mobile home, tax roll number 8406700. Administration advised the owner of the mobile home that property taxes were in arrears and that penalties are owing as a result. During the discussion with the mobile homeowner, administration was informed that the owner has not received correspondence from the town, but that a letter was sent by way of fax to the town from the legal representative acting on behalf of the owner when the mobile home was purchased. Town records do not show that the correspondence was received until most recently, which was August 12, 2016. The owner has contacted their legal representative to investigate the matter, and learned that the correspondence, which was to have been sent, contained incorrect mailing information for the new owner. The property tax account is currently up to date, including payment of the penalty fees incurred, totaling $1,711.81. The current mobile homeowner has advised that the legal representative has offered to pay one-half the resulting penalty. As such, the owner is requesting a waiver of the remaining half of the penalty fees incurred, in the amount of $855.91. Should be noted that council's decision may impact how property tax penalties are treated in similar circumstances in the future. The outcome of the decision affects enforceability of all property subjected to tax penalty. The information package regarding this matter is included for council's review and consideration. I therefore move that council deny the request of a waiver of any tax penalties for tax roll number 84006700.
Thank you, Counsel Schuler. We have a motion before us. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate that the decision today will have an effect on decisions affecting the enforceability of all property subject to tax and penalty. According to our current policy and processes, is the town at fault in this? I'd say no. Is there room for improvement of our service to this effect? I would say yes. To me, six years does seem excessive for, to allow taxes and penalties to accumulate. I would like to revisit our tax policy and penalties, or, sorry, our tax policy and process to shorten that time span between tax default and investigative contact from the town. I also like to note, once contacted, this individual did promptly pay back all taxes in the sum of $4,235.86, and made provision to pay half of the penalties, $855.90. This is an unfortunate circumstance, and if we acquiesce to request to waive the remaining penalties, I feel it's an inexpensive feedback on gaps in our administration process, and feedback such as this will help us to continue to improve services to our ratepayers. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Fredrickson. Anything further? Counsel Wheeler.
I have a couple of questions for administration. What was the reason that the notification did take so long for them to get?
Greetings. Thank you. Yes, the reason it took so long is, basically, these are five years in arrears. We cannot send a formal demand letter until an account is outstanding for three years or more, which is why the demand letter is for an amount less than the full amount, as you can see from the additional documentation. As such, only amounts outstanding since 2013 have been included. So as this was caught during the current year review of outstanding accounts, I'd say we can certainly look at our internal procedures, but as spelled out, this is sort of a one-off occurrence, and is not reminiscent of the general practices or experience for our taxpayers.
Thank you. Anything further?
Is it normal that someone who hasn't paid their taxes for five years, because we do have some accounts that aren't paid, do come forward and pay?
From my understanding, typically, we do collect in full from most, if not all, outstanding accounts.
And then the last one is just in terms of the information sent. In here, it says that the information was sent from the lawyers this year, but then when they looked back, that there was incorrect information that was supposed to be sent. But was the correspondence sent from the lawyers to the town prior to this year?
Just by way of clarification on what you're saying, I appreciate the question, and I'm sure Mr. McMillan can answer it, but the information wasn't sent by the lawyers. It's referred to here as the individual's legal representative.
I am not familiar with exactly what our records indicate. I believe the copy provided from the legal representative was submitted this year. What was received in the past, I, our records just, I don't have that information at hand, but the information contained in what they submitted does agree to what was in the system. They both had the incorrect address.
Very good. Anything further from the council? All right, we have a motion before us, that being option B in the agenda package. So all in favor of the motion? Opposed? It's noted. Thank you very much. The motion carries. Item 7.2 is Counsel Fredrickson, Recreation and Culture Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7.2, Adoption of the Recreation and Culture Master Plan. Our backgrounders are along this agenda, hey? The Town of Drayton Valley approved the development of a Recreation and Culture Master Plan in 2015. As there is no current plan, this document will guide the progress of the Recreation and Culture Delivery System. Two key supporting documents were reviewed in the development of the master plan, the Town of Drayton Valley Community Sustainability Plan, and the Drayton Valley and Brazu County Social Development Plan. These reports define at a high level the community values, as well as collective goals and objectives. The role and purpose of a Recreation and Culture Master Plan is to identify issues and opportunities, and will serve to guide decisions, actions, and allocation of resources, specifically for the next five years, but also with an eye toward the long-term future. This Recreation and Culture Master Plan identifies 27 recreation priorities and additional, and additional 11 arts and culture priorities for consideration by the Town and Community Services Department. Recreation priorities have been organized into three categories: organization and policy, programs and services, and facilities and parks. On March 23, 2016, the final draft of the Recreation and Culture Master Plan was presented to the Town's GMP meeting by David Huco of David Huco Planning and Program Management. Administration has presented the final draft to Brazu County, Parkland County, and the general public for review and comments, as well as engaging in targeted discussions with some community facility users. The document was available for viewing on the Town's website, and was promoted on the Town's available social network forums. Administration has reviewed, has received no comments from the public on the final draft. Administration is requesting adoption of the Recreation and Culture Master Plan, thereby providing a planning document for the delivery of recreation and cultural services. Therefore, I move that council adopts the final draft of the 2016 to 2020 Recreation and Culture Master Plan as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Fredrickson. Any questions, comments? Counsel Nettle.
I know you're surprised I'm going to talk about arts and culture.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the staff and David for the plan. I think it's wonderful that in our community, that we're finally recognizing the importance of arts and culture and heritage, and I think this document has, or shows accountability, and that we're serious about our pursuits for a robust arts and culture and heritage community. And I could not be more pleased to be here today to see it in front of council. So I just want to thank the staff again, because I know it was challenging. But I think what we saw through this process is, arts and culture may not be quite as visible, but when we have the open houses and we have the forums, how many people came out and spoke about it, and in the process, how many more businesses have started up, actually, even later, when we see our planning and development. It's really created a little bit of a jolt to the local economy, and I think that's important. It's not just paintings and so on. Arts and culture is so much more than that, and it is part of the fabric of everyday life in our community, and it goes so much towards quality of life. And if it can help in economic development, and more people starting their own businesses, and seeing the value of that, I think that's wonderful. So again, I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased that this month is Arts and Culture Days, and I just think, I'm very proud of my community today.
Very good. Very well articulated. Counsel Fredrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that in this master plan, it really did take a look at all the inventory of recreation buildings and assets that we currently have, as well as bringing to light the future investment that's going to have to go into these recreation facilities, either for replacement or for upgrades. There was some really good ideas in here on revenue generation, how to make the assets that we currently have more, better utilized, I guess, better utilized. But they did take a really close look also at the aquatic facility, the current one that we have, Park Valley Pool, but also looked at the previous study that we had of the proposed aquatic facility center, and did come back with some other suggestions on how to kind of bring that into scope, affordable, a more affordable scope. So like, I do, I really like the information in this Rec and Culture Master Plan, but also, I'd like the public to also realize by reading this, too, that Drayton Valley does have a lot of wonderful assets. And some of the comments in here were things like the dual arenas, something of our community of our size, was the individual who did the study, he was surprised to see that we have two arenas. And, you know, the userability of our pools, the walking trails that we have, all these things are great to have, but they do come at a cost when we're looking at replacing those, and as we're going into budget discussions, these are things that the public also needs to really consider and think about as well, that parks, we need them, but we also need to maintain them, and that comes at a cost.
Anything further? Yes, we very much look forward to using this master plan as a guide in all of our recreation and culture decision-making going forward, and so, a job well done. Compliments to administration, and, yeah, that's, we received some good feedback along the way, so very happy to see it before us today. So, we have a motion before us, and all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item 7.3, Counsel Nettle.
Thank you, Mayor. At the November 18, 2015 Governance and Priorities Meeting, the change in the delivery of the Parenting After Separation Program to the residents of Drayton Valley and area was raised as a concern by administration. At that time, administration shared its concerns with loss of availability and accessibility of this program on a local level. Subsequent to that meeting, on December 2, 2015, a letter was sent to Minister Kathleen Gailey, the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, from Mayor McLean, to express the Town's concerns about the online delivery of the Parenting After Separation Program, rather than the in-person delivery. The letter further expressed the change in response to January 20, or, sorry, in process may impact children and families in the community. Minister Gailey's response in January 2016 supported the ministry's decision, and did not indicate that there was an interest in looking at alternative forms of delivery with the service providers who had previously facilitated the program. The Drayton Valley and District FCSA Board intends to continue to advocate for the delivery of the in-person Parenting After Separation Program, and proposes to submit the attached resolution to FCSA Association of Alberta, FCSSAA, should the FCSSAA Resolution Committee determine that the topic falls within the scope of the FCSSAA to the address. It will go to vote to the membership at the Annual General Meeting in November of 2016. The Drayton Valley and District FCSA Board are requesting the council's support for this resolution. So two options are being presented before us. I move that council endorse the resolution as proposed by the Drayton Valley and District FCSA Board to be presented to the FCSA Association of Alberta.
Thank you, Counsel Nettle. Any comments, questions on this? As the backgrounder indicates, this is in follow-up to our earlier correspondence with the Minister of Justice, and I think the FCSA Board is, they're doing what they can, and enlisting our support to try to make the point that this item has not been satisfactorily addressed. And so through their association, they wish to come at it another way, and so we have the resolution before us. No questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.4, Counsel Long.
Thank you. The Pembina Nordic Ski Club is currently working on achieving its fundraising goals, which include preparing grant applications for submission to various government and non-government sources for the realization of the Eagle Point Rotary Pembina Nordic Outdoor Education and Events Center. One such grant is to the Alberta Culture and Tourism through the Community Facility Enhancement Program. A requirement of the application is a letter of support from the local municipality. So Town Council's been requested to provide such a letter. Therefore, I move that council will write a letter of support for the Pembina Nordic Ski Club to use in its grant application to Alberta Culture and Tourism.
Thank you, Counsel Long. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. At this point, we're going to call a short break, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. We're back. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we are on to item 8.0, Department Reports, 8.1, Engineering and Development. Rob Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Maybe I'll just draw your attention quickly to the Planning and Development Report. Basically, it indicates that we had, since the, for the month of August and early September, we had four development permits, new development permits, and we had 11 business licenses. Nothing really unusual to report in here. Most of the development permits were for relatively small items. Business license included liquor store, fire extinguisher sales, oilfield services, et cetera, kind of across the board. That's pretty much it for the planning and development. With respect to construction, 43rd Avenue extension is still underway. Border paving has arrived, and they've started work on it. They're starting to work the existing subgrade, get it to proper densities, and then they'll be hauling gravel shortly, and they will, the intent is, anyway, to get the first layer of asphalt in, and old concrete will be coming to do the curb work. So hopefully, this will be open by, when the snow flies this year, anyway, so. We're still involved with reviewing all our capital projects and operating expenditures, see what savings can be had this year, and looking towards potential savings for 2017 and beyond, in recognition of the economic climate. We have received tenders for the Biomile Stormwater Management Facility Outfall Structure, that's the pond by the CETC, where we have to put in a new overflow pipe in to properly modulate the rate of release of the water. Administration is reviewing, and the tender should be awarded shortly. I know staff have been heavily involved reviewing all the issues related to the storm that we had August 20. we had, August 21st to 23rd. They're looking at our system, our stormwater system, and our sanitary system, as well as the wastewater facility. So a lot of analysis is underway with respect to that. As far as public works related to, again, to the heavy rains that we had, Parkway Enterprises was awarded some miscellaneous work on bank erosion. Some of this was on Range Road 75, south of town, south of Highway 22. And there were two locations near the Omniplex on 49th Avenue, and even the little walking bridge in the Lyons West Valley Park, it was eroded, so they'll be undertaking repairs on that as well. Raw development stage three and five, actually, the final acceptance certificate inspection is happening today. Paul's involved with that. We have done some sanitary line inspection of problem areas with our line. The catch-based manual cleaning started yesterday, and there's been some repairs in fountains at the Northview and Ivan To Parks, Ivan Two Parks, I should say. With respect to the utilities, there was repair work done on aeration diffusers. They've replaced one of the low lift pumps, one of the valves at Reservoir 2. They've been involved inspecting and raiding manholes on the south and north trunk lines to see where we could affect improvements on the infiltration. They've repaired several CC valves, and they're planning their, they will have their new water treatment plant grand opening this Friday. I believe it's 1 o'clock, 1:00 to 3:00 or 1:00 to 3:30 this Friday. As far as facilities, Barry was involved with overseeing the water treatment plant gate, the new plant gate installation, and that has been complete, and the fence around the water treatment plant has been complete. They've installed new windsocks at the airport. They've certified all fire suppression systems, sprinkler systems, fire panels in all facilities for another year. The Omniplex storage shed has had all the asbestos removed, and we're currently awaiting quotes for the roof strengthening. As well, all mechanical service contracts are being reviewed. With respect to sustainability, just want to draw council's attention to the fact that TD Tree Days, Toronto Dominion Tree Days, is next Saturday, sorry, September 24th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the south end of town by the new flowerbeds area. Councilors and the public are invited to come help plant native trees and shrubs. And that would conclude my report.
Very good. Thanks very much. Any questions of Mr. Fraser? Nope. All right. Community Services and FCSSS. Ron, could you turn your mic off, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Council. A number of things. Just want to speak, first of all, to the past course, the Parenting After Separation course, and again, just the support that the FCSSS Board is getting from Town Council. I just want to pay attention a bit to some of the support that's been coming from other sources as well, too. And that's from some of the agencies that we work with, very closely within our FCSSS Board. But even the support that's coming from the individuals who have taken the course, and certainly the benefits that they show with having in-person programming rather than the online approach, has just shown a huge, huge value to those individuals who have taken those courses and to their families. And so I think that's why we're pretty insistent with our FCSSS Board, and thank you, Council, for supporting that, because we strongly believe that this has to be, there has to be a change back to the in-person programming. So thank you for that, Council. FCSSS, just a couple of other things under FCSSS. There's a new grant application that is available to all of our organizations that wish to receive funding through FCSSS. Every year, we try to improve our processes and try to make sure that the funding that we do receive is being used to the best possible benefit. And part of that is making sure that, at the end of the day, we're able to evaluate those programs that the organizations are registering for and applying for grants for. So a new application is based on outcomes and attempts to make sure that there's a measurement for those outcomes in terms of how it benefits and makes a significant positive impact on our community. With that, of course, we make sure that we try to provide training to the organizations that are making those grant applications, because it's not necessarily a straightforward process, so that training will happen on October 3rd. One more thing through FCSSS, and that is just a program on running effective meetings for nonprofits that will happen on October the 11th. Of course, I think most people are familiar with the board development workshops that we host. This is just another opportunity for those nonprofit boards to receive some skills and some tools to run their organizations effectively and efficiently. Okay, I know some people have done their happy dance. Yes, at the open space development, the rink boards are up. Happy dance. So of course, looking for the completion of the outdoor rink, hopefully by the end of this month, maybe a bit into October. The outdoor fitness equipment is slated to start going up next week. Our entrance ways, we're getting those completed, there are already two completed out of the four. And then, of course, some of the final, final grading will happen, if it ever stops raining, it has now, so. In addition to the happy dance, it's a sundance next. But it's coming along very nicely. And then, of course, thank you to everybody who did submit suggestions for the park names, so we'll be working with the Governance and Priorities Committee on that. Next, we have committee vacancy. We do have vacancies on two of our boards. One is with the FCSSS Board. We have one individual representing Brazel County that is required to sit on the FCSSS Board, and a youth representative is required. So if anybody knows individuals who would like to work with the FCSSS Board, the terminations or completion of terms of some of the individuals coming up in October. We also have one vacancy on the Early Childhood Development Centre Board. So again, if anybody's interested in helping out and volunteering for those positions, please get in touch with me. The pickleball courts, grand opening happening today, so that's where Teresa is right now, and certainly any time that a staff member goes by the pickleball courts, there's at least 11 people, 12 people up at the court, so taking full advantage of those new facilities. And not just with our senior population, but we have three schools that are setting up programs in pickleball instruction. If anybody has been through the Total Works Fitness Center, they've noticed the improvements that have been completed now. Some of those improvements had to wait until the summer period, but they're all complete and getting quite a response and positive response to those improvements. And I just got our CAO excited, because I told him that we are hosting the NHL Legends All-Star Game November 16th. And we, of course, need a local team to compete against the NHL All-Stars, so, oh, it looks like Tyler is excited, too. No? So that's happening November 16th. Alafredi, Chris Nolan, Stephane Boucher, Ron DeGuey are coming, so just four of the All-Stars that are coming to the All-Star Legends Hockey Game.
There's a couple of Montreal Canadiens in there, if I'm not mistaken.
You're correct.
This is going to be a first-class event, folks.
That's my report.
Thank you very much. Emergency Services, Tom Thompson. Got any hockey games coming up, Tom? Because that's what it takes to win this.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just referring to page 114, 115 of your package. The Fire Department responded to 25 calls for the month of August. Two of them, to start off with, two of them were rubbish grass fires. We had one that was a small rubbish fire, and another one that was, it's classed as a rubbish grass fire, but it was actually a sodas pile at the Kogen Plant. We were over there assisting them, dealing with their situation. We brought it under control and then turned it back over to them for their, for them to look after. We responded to five motor vehicle collisions, all of which were single-vehicle collisions. Two of them were single-vehicle rollovers. Two were single-vehicle collisions going into the ditch, and then one was a single-vehicle involving a deer. They all resulted in minor injuries. We also responded to one rescue call, which was an individual that was involved in an ATV collision on one of the quad trails out in the county, so we assisted with that person in getting them to the hospital. We also responded to nine alarm calls for the month of August. Two of them were alarms due to cooking, two false alarms at business, at some local businesses, one alarm at a school, four, and four residential false alarms, and those will be dealt with through our fire alarm bylaw. We also had an assist with another agency, and that was an EMS assist for lift and assist with a patient. We also responded to seven miscellaneous calls. One of them was an explosion at a local commercial building with no fire. We had an oil spill from a parked vehicle that we were involved with in terms of cleaning up. We had four trees that had fallen onto power lines that we were called out to assist with, and we also had a carbon monoxide leak at a local residence. Besides all of that, we were involved with the Tour of Alberta, providing security on the Friday night, as well as being on standby in the event that we had incidents during the race. Fortunately, the race went off without a hitch, so that was all good. We had a very successful kids camp. We had 32 young kids, ages 8 to 12, spend a week with us at the fire hall, learned a little bit about firefighting, and learned a little bit about themselves as well, and what they can accomplish if they work hard. So it was a very successful and rewarding camp for those 32 individuals. And to wrap up, we are getting close to Fire Prevention Month in October, so we will be very active and busy out in the community doing events for that month. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And congratulations on another successful kids camp. I think that's a great, it's also a somewhat unique initiative from our fire service in this community, and I think it really helps engage the community through our children. So, good work. Administration, we have Communications and Marketing, Tyler Russell.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Hope you guys are all well this morning. Here's my report. Wow, it's really loud today. The new letterhead with our branding has been approved by administration and the mayor. Once supplies have been used up of our old letterhead, we will start moving forward to use our new letterhead. It is absolutely spectacular. It looks really, really beautiful. So thank you so much to Ms. Stone for doing that. Also, of course, the letterhead will be printed on recycled paper. What the percentage is right now, we're just kind of working out to be able to find out the best and most cost-effective way of being able to have it. Also, MidDrayton Valley, for those of you that came in the front door this morning, I'm sure you guys all saw that. It was a great, great promotion that we had here with the hashtag MidDrayton Valley. Some amazing photos from our community, and we encourage everyone to stop by to go and see it as they do walk in the door. It will be in the Civic Centre for the next few weeks for everybody to be able to go and see. It looks really neat. Also, the automated traffic enforcement. We do, of course, have information on how to access the Safe and Healthy Community Allocation Fund. It is being sent out in the utility bills. Our paper cuts on our hands, you'll be able to notice those very, very quickly, and we are getting that out as fast as we possibly can. Also, we did use our push notification via our app, because school, of course, back in session yet again. It was a very, very effective way of being able to let everyone know that school zones are now in effect. The Tour of Alberta, which of course was September 3rd, thank you to everybody in administration and also in council that participated, were part of it, that were involved, we do absolutely appreciate that. We also launched our commercials that we ended up having produced, and they looked absolutely outstanding, and we will have them up on our website within the next couple of days, so that everybody can go and see them, too. Also, of course, budget consultation has begun. We do have the online survey, and of course, thank you to everyone who showed up, and were part of it at the Community Registration Night that did happen on September 6th. We, of course, will have other different places to be able to do the budget consultation, and it is available online right now via our website as well. Also, of course, the water treatment plant, the opening is happening on Friday from 1:00 until 3:30. We encourage everyone to attend. We will be taking pictures, so everybody, I'm sure, will be dressed in a vest and will be able to showcase our great facility that we have here in Drayton Valley. And yeah, that concludes my report.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thanks so much. CAO Report, Mr. Dibbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. Few things to report on today. It's been mentioned by a few others in administration as well. My comments around the Tour of Alberta would be to thank staff, as well as community members, who were involved in the myriad of activities and undertakings in putting the event together. A number of individuals on staff that were a part of the local organizing committee, a number of members of staff that the day of volunteered, hosted the town booth, were involved in specific aspects of the tour as well. And just wanted to share for council and for the public's notice that I think sometimes the amount of time and effort in putting on such an event, and all events in the community for that matter, but particularly with something we have not done before. And in a number of ways, feeling our way through and with the goal in mind of making our experience second to none. I appreciated the staff sergeant's comments earlier today from the RCMP perspective. I would also make mention of the letter to the editor that was in this week's Western Review from one of our local businesses, who I thought was an outstanding capturing of the event from their perspective as a business owner in town, which we have heard anecdotally has been shared as well by other business owners in town, which was not an insignificant reason of ultimately why the community chose to participate in this event at that time. I'm not certain that we would want to do it anytime soon again, but we will be doing a full debrief with the local organizing committee. We hope to have the chairs into seat council after doing their debrief as a committee, but also with the Tour of Alberta Organizational Committee itself, the Alberta Peloton Association. And we're looking at having that in at a future council meeting in the very near future to provide a more detailed debrief and postmortem from those that were most intimately involved in the event and all that was there. Further, Mr. Russell's comments about Safe and Healthy Communities Fund allocation information that's being put out, wanted to advise council that today we are also putting out publicly and posting information related to quarterly summaries of violation tickets issued in the community. This information will by quarter, since Photoradar Automated Traffic Enforcement Program's inception in Drayton Valley last year, indicate what, for those quarterly periods, the average ticketed speed per speed zone, 30, 50, and 70-kilometer zones are in our community, as well as the average percentage by which a violation ticket exceeded the posted limit. In administration's view, this demonstrates that speed, an excessive speed, remains an issue in our community. Just looking at these, and I won't go into great specifics, but the smallest average that exceeds the posted limit is double digits, and 25% over the posted limit. The highest average violation period by one of the quarters is almost 50%, 49% over the posted limit, and unfortunately, is in our 30-kilometer zones. So I think that information is important information that needs to be into the public domain and puts some context around the program and why the speed enforcement program is of necessity at the present time. A quick update, as was mentioned by Mr. Fraser, with regard to the extreme water event and storms experienced in the latter part of August. The insurance and related investigations between our insurer, AMSC, and private insurers for homeowners continues. We have, as I believe I've mentioned to council before, have asked that to be expedited as quickly as quickly as is possible, to help the community and Administration understand what, if any, deficiencies, aspects, elements of our system, particularly sewer and stormwater may need attention, may be required to address. As council and the public knows, and with other meetings that have been had with affected property owners, the unfortunate circumstance that we experienced was too much water too quickly that overwhelmed our system. We, though, want to ensure that, from a system construct perspective, that the system functioned as it was designed to do and to the, the best ability that it can. Further to Mr. Fraser's report, different dimensions and different aspects of the system in concert with an extreme water event are being looked at. Those include linings, infiltration issues, other aspects related to our sewer and storm water management system. We are aware that with the rain incidents, not just this storm, but what we've seen this year, has impacted our lagoons, particularly Lagoon Six, which borders on the Cooley. It has brought into clear relief, from Administration's perspective, a longer-term issue with this particular lagoon that needs to be understood and addressed. And we are dealing with, with ISL in terms of what the longer-term plans for our storm water management system are, what our options are. And regrettably, the nature of our year and the water events this year has likely expedited what will need to be done with regard to that element of our system, if not more aspects of that, which will require attention, if not mediation attention with the balance of this year, but have an impact as well with our capital plan for 2017. As was also mentioned, we are into the last month of Quarter Three in fiscal 2016, and with our revenue challenges and budgetary challenges that the community has been facing, a very careful eye is being brought to bear by all elements of Administration on expenditures and on what we are doing as far as an in-year budgetary management approach and focus. We do know with just normal carryovers and other aspects, and we are moving to try and secure completion of as many of the 2016 capital plan items as is possible. But whether will impact some of those projects, and there will be carryovers in whole or in part of some projects, that we will then have to bring forward to council for review in the context then of 2017, 2017 capital plan desires, but also fiscal realities as council turns its attention to next year's budget process later this month and into the fall. I think two other aspects, more from an internal Administration aspect that I just wanted to mention to council. At the end of this week, town staff, we are going to have our first gathering of all management staff. And this is leading into our second all-staff Town Hall meeting, which will be on September 22nd. One of the aspects, as we've been looking at, not just in-year challenges, but also go-forward approaches, is wanting to be very deliberate as a management team, but also as a management group toward being purposeful, to the needs of the community, to the priorities that council has, but also from an internal staff perspective, being very deliberate and mindful about focus on outcomes and not just activity. And in some cases, that is a different focus, and in some cases, that is just bringing a clear and higher relief to what is an important management undertaking. This leads into our second all-staff session. We had one previously in the spring, but also coming forward next week, a chance for all-staff, subject to operational requirements, to get together, have some time with myself and the rest of the leadership team with any questions, comments, concerns that they have, but also a little bit to talk about the upcoming activities around budget 2017, about being purposeful in our work, about the in-year challenges and elements that we're facing, but also in terms of bringing a collective perspective and opportunity to, to bring forward ideas, thoughts, quite frankly, concerns and issues that may be experienced in different parts of our workforce, and also have an opportunity to hear those, to speak to those, to explore those, and then bring those forward in terms of what we need to do as a staff going forward. And so, maybe with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll stop there, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and address them.
Thank you very much. Particularly appreciate the comments regarding the scrutiny and attention that Administration has been and continues to pay to our budget process. Any questions, comments? All right. Nine point oh is council reports, Councilor Fredrickson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It appears the last half of my month will be busier than the first half, but perhaps not as informative. So, September 6th, I attended the Community Registration Night, as well as with some other councillors, and, and I was there from 7:00 till 8:45. I did the graveyard shift. And it was interesting. What I had seen with the Community Registration Night, too, is that it appeared that there was just a constant flow of people rather than the influx and, and then nothing. I was quite, people looked at our display, and they really wanted to be engaged. They, they slowed, they took a look at the questions, and the questions we were asking were regarding taxes, as well as important areas for expenditures for the town. People stopped and talked, and the responses were surprising to me. I had thought that, you know, the, the immediate response you want to go to is no taxes and, and no change, but there was a lot of people that were quite open to the idea of minimal tax increase. They also really wanted to ask about and talk about what were some of the areas that are important to them in terms of the services that are being provided. So it was quite an engaging experience. It was, it was really good, actually. I was involved as a volunteer with the Tour of Alberta on September 4th. So I got stationed in front of the strip mall by Panago, and just regulating vehicles coming and going until we had hard closures on those intersections. And my spot afforded me a really cool perspective of seeing the riders come through. One of the tour staff kind of told us, me and my two new friends that I had made there, where to stand to see the bikers coming through and around the corner. So it was, from a volunteer perspective, I went to the volunteer information night. It was really well organized. We had maps. I had downloaded the tour tracker app, so there was individuals that were coming and talking to me and asking, you know, you were giving them a play-by-play of where the cyclists were. And, and actually, some of the people that talked to me, a lot of them followed the tour. They weren't, they weren't local residents. There was a lot of local residents there, but I was surprised to see that there was a lot of people from out of town as well that were there. So that was, that was interesting. And then September 10th, I participated in the DV100 as one of the Wheelers. So we had Team Farrell and the Wheelers. Myself and Graham were the Wheelers. You could not have asked for a better, better day. It was gorgeous. And that event, so with the Community Foundation, when I was Executive Director, I helped organize the event. And last year, Ruth and I volunteered in the event, and then this year, riding in the event. So it was really neat to see three different perspectives of how the event comes together, what it looks like from a volunteer's perspective, but now actually riding through that, I did the 40K, riding through the 40K and just seeing the energy of the, the volunteers as they're cheering you through, as well as the RCMP stationed at, like, so when, you know, when you're organizing it, you're, you know people are there, you're trusting that they're there, but you're not seeing it. So it was a really different perspective just to see the event underway. So it was great. That's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Nato.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a very late summer in terms of meetings, so the two that happened most recently are just the beginning of September, is the organization for the Alberta Culture Day. So we had that meeting and just finalizing details. And just a reminder to the community that everything that weekend, October 1st and 2nd, is free. So there are several events going on. There are some dance classes that are being offered for three, for free, sorry, I missed Joanne's. There's a heritage walk around our downtown core. There's antique tractor pole finals. There's the Drayton Valley Ag Society Bench Show. There is the Fine Arts Exhibit. There's multicultural dance demonstration at E-PAC, as well as, again, Tommy Banks that evening. So, again, there's so much going on in the community, and it is all free, so please participate and enjoy the day, or the weekend, sorry. The following evening, I attended the Legacy Meeting, just finalizing some plans for a new brochure to go out, as well as a presentation DVD, so we can go out to local organizations and promote the Legacy Project and what's going on. Phase one is well underway, having already gotten all the, all the Western Views there now. So they're underway in terms of digitization, so we're on our way. So that's exciting. On a personal note, I want to thank council and community. This summer has been very challenging with my father's car accident and subsequent strokes. And I want to thank everybody, the community and council, for their support. My dad remains in critical care and not expected to come home, but I appreciate everybody's support and my absence and throughout the summer and dealing with family. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Wong.
Thank you. Very quiet couple of weeks, I think, has been for most of us. I attended the Legacy Meeting, which Nicole just mentioned as ultimate for Councilor Schuler. Always a pleasure to stand in. Also, a Yellowhead Regional Library one-day event last Friday, and in our own library board just last night, although it seems like longer ago, just getting up to speed there after a summer off, so not much in the way of news, but starting to look at the budget process there. Just wanted to mention, I missed the Tour of Alberta. I think I'm the only person in town that wasn't there, but I've heard nothing but positives, so I salute those of you who are more involved in that than me, which is everybody. And also the DV100, which I did take part in. Fabulous event. I'm still pumped about it. You should all do it next year. Brandy beat me by a second and a half. She failed to mention that, so I will point that out.
And you have many years on there.
I have many years on. And the only other thing I'll mention, I put on ten pounds since last year. I really flew down the hills this year, so that's a, that's a positive there.
It's all about balance.
It's all about balance. But that concludes my report.
He closed it down.
All right. Thanks very much. Councilor Schuler.
Thank you, worship. It has been quiet. I was away on holidays for a week as well, so just two, two meetings to report on. August 19th was the Clean Energy and Technology Center Committee Meeting. Things are moving along there reasonably well. They've been very busy, lots of inquiries, so there's, hopefully, we'll start to see some movement on a few things shortly. August 26th, a meeting with Norquest College and go over what, I guess, what their involvement will be with the CETC. And I think I came out of that a lot more optimistic than, than I did going in. So we'll, we'll see how things progress with Norquest. And then September 3rd, I did attend the Tour of Alberta, but not on the town's behalf. I fortunately ended up working that day, but it was a fabulous event. I had, had a lady that was helping us at, at our display, and she had never been to Drayton Valley before. She was absolutely amazed with the town and that the town, a town of our size could pull off an event like this as well as we did. She was very impressed. She's promised to come back and, and see some more of the local merchants. She did a bunch of Christmas shopping while she was there, so, which was good. She'll help out our merchants downtown. But, yeah, she had nothing but amazing comments that were passed on through, you know, through the tell us organization as well, on how well our community did. And, yeah, the tour was phenomenal. The organizers did a fantastic job, and it was, it was fun to actually watch, once they started broadcasting live. We had numerous displays set up to, to watch it, you know, at, at our location and, you know, watching that live, and then you can see that they're moving pretty quick, you know, when you're watching on, you know, on a laptop, but when they actually got into town to see how fast they actually went by was pretty amazing. So I just want to say congratulations to all the organizers for a job very well done. And that is my report.
Thanks very much. Councilor Wheeler.
Thank you. Councilor Fredrickson and I hung out a lot, seemed like, this month between the Tour of Alberta, the DV100, Community Registration Night. I was also last week attending up in Athabasca the Alberta Recycling Conference, and which was very good. It was interesting to see who was there and what other communities are doing. Le Duke's doing a phenomenal job with some of their, their projects in that area, so we bring forward more in my report. We do have our Powered by Entrepreneurs coming up this week. Eric's doing a session with real estate, but it's Welcome to Leadership Open to Anyone on Thursday at 4:30 at the Clean Energy Technology Center. So if you're interested, call the town or call one of us. Yeah, and between the water treatment plant opening, the farmer's market, the Christmas one, the zombie run, there's lots of things going on. So I'm just happy to be here and join Drayton Valley for the rest of the month.
Thank you very much. Since, I'll just go through a few items since our last council meeting. Councilor Schuler alluded to the meeting we held with the President of Norquest College on the 26th of August. I, too, was encouraged with Norquest's commitment and the board's, Norquest Board's commitment to going stronger towards business development. And for a college, that means development of programming, both in their other locations as well as in Drayton Valley. So there's more to, that discussion will evolve in the near future. 31st of August, Mr. Dibbin and I, of course, met with a number of concerned citizens, concerned for very good reason, associated with the rain, with basements flooding and experiencing sewer backup. Mr. Dibbin, I think, adequately outlined what the town is doing in terms of trying to get a better picture of the nature of the problems and what can be done to, to give them redress. Second and third, of course, starting with Friday evening on the 2nd, and then, of course, with the race on the 3rd, the Tour of Alberta. From my perspective, I want to say a couple of things. First, my heartfelt congratulations and thanks to the organizers, the local organizing committee in particular, Trina Jolie and Sandra Banner, the co-chairs, but the many other members of the committee and dozens of volunteers. People who have never volunteered in any event either like this, or in some cases, not at all, in a community-wide initiative, showed up to demonstrate their pride in community and a desire to, to be a good host. That was reflected in the comments that I heard from, from people who are, I met with some people throughout the day who are sponsors of the Tour of Alberta, the provincial, province-wide effort, and they complimented us on the extraordinary organization, festival atmosphere, just the coordinated effort and enthusiasm that they saw in Drayton Valley's pres- they saw in Drayton Valley's presentation of the tour was well noted and appreciated. Those who, including, some of those comments were from people who volunteered with the tour as well. And because I had the opportunity to speak with them, I've been telling everybody this because I sound, I sound like I'm a little starstruck, but Alex Stida, who recently rode in the DV100 again, he is the very first North American to have won the yellow jersey in the Tour de France. Did it some years ago. He still cycles. He's still very involved in the cycling community. He's also involved in the Tour of Alberta. And he extended his congratulations to Drayton Valley on a supremely well-organized event. My compliments as well to Mr. Dibbin and the rest of our staff, who were deeply involved in the effort to bring the Tour of Alberta to Drayton Valley and to host it appropriately. The volunteers, the community generally stepped up to show pride. And part of our, part of our goal in bringing the tour to Drayton Valley in the first place was to have it serve as a capacity-building exercise to, number one, prove to ourselves that we can do this as a community, this kind of event at this level. And then hopefully, after a thorough debrief, be able to replicate it in other arenas, whether it's cycling or some other kind of activity. So remember what you've all learned in this process, because we may need to draw upon it in future. And so, again, my compliments to all involved and to the community. Last week, of course, was Bike to Work Week, which was planned in association both with our involvement with the tour and as a lead-up to the DV100. I know of council, did, okay, we've got two counselors who bike to work at least once. I think you did it just about every day during the week. And you as well?
I keep going where I have to Wednesday.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's still good enough. So nice effort, and we'll see what we can do next year to improve council's involvement in that. The DV100, of course, was a very successful event. And my congratulations to them. Of course, we tried to treat the involvement with the Tour of Alberta as a complimentary event to the DV100. I think that was proved out in the results. And the fact that we've now grown the volunteer base in the community. And finally, I just wanted to touch on another, one of many meetings over the last few weeks. Met with our MLA yesterday to review Drayton Valley's concerns as regards the amendments announced in late May for the Municipal Government Act. Specifically, we talked about the government's previous promise to address linear tax revenue. We also talked about the proposed inter-ministerial collaboration frameworks, among other things. It was a very positive discussion. I think, I think the MLA fully understands not only our position, but the position of many urban municipalities. And he will convey that to his party's municipal affairs critic. So that is, that is the essence of my report. Item 10.0 is the information items. We have the Star Catholic Newsletter from August 2016, the Counselor Wheeler's conference report for the EOEP course she attended, Drayton Valley Brazos County Fire Services Statistics for August, the RCMP August Statistics, World Suicide Prevention Day Proclamation, and my own FCM report, better late than never. So could I get a motion to receive those as information? Counselor Nado, all in favor? That's carried. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Schuler, all in favor? We're adjourned.